There we go.
I just started it.
Great. Before we begin the public hearing, I want to share a few logistical features with you. We get to the second slide, which is not working. Okay. And for some reason, all right, I'll have to do it that way. So as I just said, the meeting is being recorded. All attendees are muted to minimize background noise. And, you know, please take a moment to make sure that is true on your individual laptops and phones. We ask that everyone remain muted during the hearing to reduce back, to continue to reduce background noise. There will be an opportunity to provide oral testimony, at which point we will unmute those who wish to speak one by one. If you joined online, please enter your name, affiliation, and email in the chat box located in the chat box, chat bar on the Zoom control panel on your computer or in the top right of your mobile device by clicking at the chat bubble icon. If you would like to testify, please type testify after your name and use the raise hand function of the Zoom control. So let's see if this now will not take me out of the, yeah, fine. Um, so if you're having trouble finding the chat box in your computer, try clicking on the triangle of the left word of the chat to expand the bar. If you join by phone, we will unmute callers one at a time after the presentation to ask for this information. And I did notice at least one phone and to find an opportunity for you to testify. Do not use the chat function to provide written testimony under proposed regulation. So now the hearing will begin, leave up the informational slide in case someone joins late to make sure they understand which hearing they have attended. So this is a public hearing for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Again, my name is Joanne Moran, and I am the hearing officer for this matter. With me on the hearing panel is Michael Woodman. Michael, is your, is your camera on?
Yes.
All right. I just don't see you. I have other people. Great. We are here today, Tuesday, March 7th at 10 o'clock on, on an online public teleconference to accept testimony concerning the proposed regulation 310 CMR 7.0214 for the cumulative impact analysis. At that time, as at this time, Mass DEP will not be responding to any questions or comments regarding the regulation. If anyone wants to provide comment on this proposed regulation prior to the end of the public comment period on April 7th, 2022, 23, I'm sorry, 2023, and needs interpretive services, Mass DEP provides language services to limited English proficient individuals free of charge. Information about these interpretive and translation services is available on Mass DEP's webpage. So the hearing, Mass DEP has proposed amendments to Regulation 310 CMR 7, Air Pollution Control, to require a cumulative impact analysis or CIA for comprehensive plan applications, also abbreviated CPAs, for facilities located in or near environmental justice populations. The proposed CIA regulations are contained in a new section, 310 CMR 7.02, in parentheses, 14, section 14, and include enhanced public outreach to an involvement of environmental justice populations, assessment of existing community conditions, and analysis of community cumulative impacts. Written testimony will be accepted until 5:00 PM on April 7th, 2023. This is the date and the time by which written comments must be received by Mass DEP. It is not a postmark date. Please submit written testimony electronically to massdep dot impact at mass dot com. Or if you wish to submit written testimony on paper, please mail it to myself, Joanne Moran. And that's M O R I N, Mass Department of Environmental Protection, 100 Cambridge Street, Boston, Mass 02114. Comments sent to any other address may not be received in time to be included in the official docket. In a moment, we will begin to unmute computer participants who have indicated they wish to provide oral testimony. Once all computer participants who have indicated they wish to testify have done so, we will call on the phone participants who wish to testify to identify themselves and ask them to present their oral testimony. To ensure all those who wish to testify are able, we will ask participants to limit oral testimony to five minutes. Please speak clearly and distinctly. I will now open testimony. So we will look for those who have raised their hand and indicated in the chat box that they wish to testify. And Mike, have you identified someone who wishes to start on the computer online? And then we'll do the phones afterwards. So definitely we'll remember the phones.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any raised hands at this time or anything that has been typed into the meeting chat.
So we'll give that wait. I'm sure there are some people. I see the chat up here. Just there was a question. We can't answer a question. Is there a question about the process? EVO advisors have a question about the process. We can't do a question about the reg. Understood. Okay, so, um, Mark, you want to unmute EVO advisors? I think they have a question about the process.
Yes, I apologize. If it's inappropriate, my question is really about the enforcement of it because it basically is going to fall into the hands of environmental regulators, right?
We can't answer questions like that.
Understood.
Comments.
Understood.
Okay, great. Thank you. So.
Joanne, as a number of folks did arrive after your explanations, you may want to repeat the process for
Okay.
indicating, indicating they'd like to provide testimony.
Okay, for those who arrived a little bit later, if you've joined, we'd like you to enter your name, affiliation, and email in the chat box. And next to your name, indicate testify and raise your hand if you wish to testify. And then we will unmute you and have you testify one at a time and ask that you limit your testimony to five minutes at a time, a total of five minutes, so that we can allow everyone to share their testimony. So those who join late, if you have testimony, please indicate that in the chat box. Next to your name and affiliation and raise the hand function. I can only see the raised hand, motion reactions. I'm not seeing. Well, as we're waiting for the online people, I know there was some phone. Was there, I know there was at least one person by the phone. Was there any testimony by people who are joining by phone? And we would need to unmute them and ask them if they wanted to provide testimony. I know there was at least, I saw one phone come on.
Yeah, I'm no longer, I'm no longer seeing any, anyone dialing in by phone.
Okay, maybe that person dropped. Okay. All right. All right. Want to make sure we're not missing anyone. Is anyone having trouble? Mark, why don't you unmute just for a second, for a few seconds? Why don't you unmute everyone and just make sure we're not missing anyone who wants to provide testimony?
Give me a moment. I've asked all to unmute.
Okay, you are unmuted. So if there's anyone who's having trouble indicating to us, no, no, they're all muted. They're all muted still, actually.
It's a request. That's their option.
Okay. Okay, so you can unmute yourself and verbally tell us if you wish to provide testimony in case you're having trouble indicating that you wish to provide testimony. I just want to make sure we're not missing anyone who wishes to testify. Yeah, you seem like it. Well, we're gonna wait till, you know, we're gonna wait a while till 10:30, but if.
Joanne. It looks like people in the chat are interested in testifying. I can't tell.
Well, no, they're supposed to give their affiliation, but they're supposed to indicate they want to testify.
Yeah.
Testify.
Okay, all right, great. Stacy?
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Great. Yes, terrific. Thank you, Stacy. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Stacy Rubin, and I am the Vice President of Environmental Justice at Conservation Law Foundation. For those who don't know, we are a regional nonprofit organization that is operating in the six New England states. I want to commend the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the agency's terrific work charting new territory with a cumulative impact assessment framework and regulations. I am a member of the Massachusetts Environmental Justice Table, which was one of the leading advocacy groups that was pushing for the implementation of cumulative impact assessment into state law. I was thrilled when the roadmap law included a directive for the Department of Environmental Protection to integrate cumulative impact assessments into certain permits. As I think a lot of people here are well aware, communities are fighting facilities one by one on a case by case basis. Incorporating cumulative impacts into regulatory review, starting with air permitting, should create a sea change. Just as a few examples, Conservation Law Foundation is involved in multiple campaigns regarding facilities that are regulated by the Department of Environmental Protection air permits. Those include the Palmer Biomass Facility in Springfield, Massachusetts, the ExxonMobil Everett Terminal, the Salem Footprint Power Station, and the Wynn Wheel Abraider Facilities in Saugus. Specific to the proposed regulations, I have a couple of recommendations to strengthen them. First, I recommend adding a definition for cumulative impacts, which should really guide the goals of a cumulative impact assessment. Cumulative impacts are a method to assess existing environmental and energy burdens versus energy and environmental benefits in a community. Cumulative impacts should identify a disproportionate exposure of a community to public health or environmental or energy hazards from one or multiple facilities, including power plants, recycling facilities, trash transfer stations, wastewater treatment plants, incinerators, landfills, as well as smaller businesses and other industry. Cumulative impacts can give regulators a holistic view of all environmental and health risks that a community may face so that those issues can be more effectively addressed. Secondly, the indicators that are proposed in the regulations are an excellent list and probably incomplete. We will be providing additional written comments to provide specific recommendations. What's not clear is how those indicators are used for the Department of Environmental Protection to make a finding as to whether there is an unfair burden or a disproportionate impact on a potential community. I want to point out that in New Jersey, which is a state that I think is maybe slightly further ahead than Massachusetts, but not by much, the, the agencies in New Jersey look at the combined stressor total for an overburdened community by adding the number of adverse environmental and public health stressors or indicators in the overburdened community. And essentially, if enough triggers are met with the indicators, that results in a denial of a proposed, you know, permit or other approval for a covered facility. We'd like to see more clarity on the DEP having specific indicators and reasons to deny a permit if there is a finding of a cumulative impact in a community. And in particular, integrating the definition of environmental justice population should matter when it comes to the agency assessing whether something is an overburdened community. Additionally, we'd like to see the section that refers to decision making very clearly articulate whether there is a cumulative impact. And if so, realize whether there is any increased additional burden for an environmental justice population or impacted community. If that is the case, then we'd like to see the Department of Environmental Protection consider whether there are mitigation measures that would make the facility, if granted an approval, not increase any greenhouse gas emissions, co-pollutants, or contribute to any additional risk factors. If that is not the case, we recommend that the regulations include a requirement that the Department of Environmental Protection deny the permit or other approval. And lastly, I want to comment about the timing. We request clarification that there is a 60-day review period prior to submission of the comprehensive plan application so that the applicant is engaging with the potentially impacted community in addition to the 60 days public comment period once the cumulative impact analysis is submitted. It looks like the regulations contemplate those two periods of time, but it's not entirely clear for the kinds of facilities that I mentioned earlier where there are a number of impacts to environmental justice populations. We want to make sure that there is sufficient time for the community to be able to weigh in and try to influence the decision that the department will make. We will be submitting very detailed additional written comments, but again, I just want to thank the department so much for all of your hard work and welcome the opportunity to participate today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Any clarifying questions, Mike?
No.
Okay, great. Um, okay, I'm looking at the chat for any other indications of testimony. I still only, that's the only one I'm still seeing is Stacy's. Don't think I'm missing anything else. Still would appreciate everyone putting in their name and affiliation into the chat just for our records, if you can. Um, so if I've missed anyone, I'm not seeing anyone else requesting testimony. Please let me know. Correct me. Um, but we are still going to wait longer. Someone else would like to testify? Okay, I see EVO advisors have said to testify. Correct, Mike? Do you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
And they're unmuted.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up. I apologize for my question before. I want to follow up with a couple of points that Stacy made. I mean, everybody here who has been engaged in a long time knows that the EJ policy is originally issued in, I believe, in 2002, wherein an environmental justice person was assigned to every state bureau of the DEP, that these people were to be consulted on every project that the bureau tackles. I think we can agree that to some extent, it has been ineffectual in some areas, particularly concerning that the engagement and the protection of the EJ populations are a stated priority for your organization. And we just feel that outreach to these communities should be aligned with the intention that's so clearly defined in, in a policy. Per Stacy's point, we do feel that a lot of the failures because of ineffective outreach. The vast DEP is required by their policy to reach out to communities when environmental regulations, policies, and decisions are being made in their area. And every effort should be made by the EPA to engage and collaborate and train these communities on the plans that are being proposed in their neighborhoods. But that's just the policy. The rules allow minimal notification to these EJ populations. I think we've all seen, for example, the public notice publicizing a meeting may be behind a paywall, which can be cost prohibitive. It's not really the best way to reach these groups. There are community advocacy groups that can better reach people through churches and by other means. But we personally have seen that they are rarely contacted because it means more work. The state regulators are not going the extra mile to do the outreach, is what we find. So for example, when meetings are set, they're often scheduled purposefully at inconvenient times, midday, midweek, which can make it difficult for people in minority communities to take off work or find childcare. Meetings could be arranged in the evening. They could offer childcare. They could make a video recording of the meeting. However, any meeting held at any time is following the letter of the law. And so you can claim that public notice was conducted, uh, conducted, excuse me. In this way, various others, you know, this is how sites that pollute can easily slide into poor communities of color. And I think this is how we have all seen here that current rules allow an unfair burden to be created, to be created in EJ communities. So apart from things like unprotected groundwater, you know, what happens is people in poor communities of color tend to suffer from more asthma, heart disease, et cetera. And this is what we're talking about with the community, with the cumulative analysis, where I wrap up. Right? Pollution standards are being set per site and not per community. All right. So if each site can pollute up to 1,000 parts per billion, adding more sites, obviously, as so clearly stated, increases the cumulative pollution. Right? We just want state regulators to keep an eye on illegal sites as well. So we're very much in favor of this proposal, which is to, you know, you know, to put a cap on the number of sites in a community. Well, I'll just wrap up by saying, obviously, you, you know, you are revisiting the old regulations and, and, and we're, and we're on board with that. And that's all, and I wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any clarifying questions? Mike?
No, nope.
Okay. So I'm still not seeing anymore. Uh, wish to testify, just let me know if we're an error, not seeing it. We're still gonna wait longer. Make sure we're not missing anything.
Yeah, I see, I see nothing in the chat and no hands raised at this time.
We'll wait till quarter of, check back and see. We'll wait till quarter of, check back and see. Yeah, I just want to let you know that hearing is still open. I'm just gonna wait another few minutes, but I just want to make sure if there's anyone who wishes to testify, to please let us know. Um, in case someone came later, uh, to indicate in the chat you wish to testify or to raise your hand to let us know you wish to testify. The hearing is still open. And we're just making sure that if there's anyone who wishes to testify, um, we're just, um, keeping it open a few more minutes to make sure we've included everyone. And then we'll close the, uh, the hearing in a few minutes. If, if we don't hear from any more, anyone more, so. So I, has everyone presented oral testimony who wishes to do so? Okay, I, I want to thank, um, all of you who have testified today, as well as those who have attended this hearing, well, without testifying. All the testimony from this hearing will be considered before MAS DEP finalizes the proposed regulation. After the public comment period closes at 5:00 PM on April 7th, 2023, we will review and take under advisement the comments raised during this public comment period prior to issuing the final regulation amendments. When the final regulation is issued, it will be posted on MAS DEP's website. We will notify all parties who participated in the public hearing process when the posting is completed. There being no further testimony, I will hereby close this remote hearing at, um, let me just get the official time here. I'll trust my phone. But at 10:43, I think. Let's mark you having more official time. Um, AM on, uh, um, March 7th, uh, 2023. So thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day. And there'll be another hearing this evening. Um, we have another hearing this evening at 6 o'clock.